Oh, we're perfect. Got it. They got it. Are we expecting Lois? Is anybody here that Lois is not speaking of cats not going to attend?
Oh, she's in the waiting room right now. I'm letting her in.
Perfect. Perfect. Good. Wait to begin. Lois, if you can unmute yourself and turn your camera on, we'll start our meeting. Pretty much right on time. Lois, I think we have your audio. We just don't have your video right now.
I know. I don't. I don't know why you don't. Let's go ahead and start.
Sounds good to me. Let's call this meeting to order at eight oh one. Now eight oh two. On Monday, February twenty eighth. Nice to have everybody here. Gosh, it's. The month kind of flew by. We barely squeezed this meeting in on the last day of the month. Let's start with our pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Kristin, would you please do the roll call?
Sure. Trustee Chen.
Present.
Trustee Derry. Trustee Derry.
Lois.
Present.
Trustee Mono.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Hollingsworth.
I'm here.
And Chairperson Domeyer.
I am here. Thank you so much for that. Perfect. Did we receive any public comments?
We did not.
Okay, good. Good question. Then let's move to our first agenda item, the approval of the lengthy minutes from our last meeting, where these are detailed notes. Any discussion?
I move that we approve the minutes from January twenty fourth, two thousand twenty two.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Terrific. I was gonna say all of they ever say I, but that's not how we do it over Zoom. No. All right, Kristin.
Okay, trustee Chen.
Yes.
Trustee Derry. Oh, wait. Lois is in the waiting room again. She might have gone disconnected.
I'm here.
She's trying. Lois is logging on from another device. She's 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 here and then she's logging in from another place. So she's. She heard you, Kristin.
Did we her vote? I don't remember.
No. Lois, are you voting to approve the minutes?
I'm participating. I don't know why.
We're gonna get that feedback if she has two devices.
Yes.
I can mute one. I just don't know which one of her to mute.
If you go ahead.
Can we? Can you say something? We can see if we can hear you right now.
Lois, can you hear us at all? Kristin, why don't you try unmuting the one you muted and swapping it around? See if that works.
I've requested her to unmute herself.
Oh, gotcha. Lois, can you hear us at all? Because we cannot hear you.
If your device isn't.
There she goes. There you are. Hi, Lois. Lois, how'd you vote on the? Did you vote to approve the the meeting minutes? Lois, can you hear us? Okay, you're nodding yes. Okay. We're having trouble hearing you. Can you say something? Kristin, if you were to, are you able to exclude the other lowest area that's on there that might be interfering with her hearing us?
The one that doesn't have her camera.
Yes. Yes. If we we.
I think she needs to turn on the volume on the one that doesn't have the camera on because we don't hear her on the camera one.
Okay. We need a tech support person for Lois. Lois, can you hear us at all?
Kristin, as the meeting organizer, you may have the authority to unmute the other.
I don't. I can ask them to unmute. Do we want to have her call in through a phone for audio?
Sure, but if she can't hear us, how are we gonna tell her to do it? Lois, can you hear us? Wave your hand if you can hear us, Lois. You can hear us. Okay. Okay, we cannot hear you at all, so we can't. Can we? We can. Can we do a visual if she's? Can she vote with a thumbs up for a visual for something? Is that acceptable? Liz is nodding yes. Okay, Lois, the the vote right now is to approve the minutes. You're saying, yeah, if you say yes, wave your hand. Okay? If you're in the affirmative to approve the minutes. Lois, can you hear us? Okay. All right. We see your mouth moving, but we can't hear you. So if can you raise your hand if you approve the the meeting minutes from last meeting?
Maybe a thumbs up.
A thumbs up. Nothing. Okay. Kristin, you suspect it's the volume on her computer that's not turned all the way up?
I'm not really sure what it is.
Okay. I'm not sure if we're stuck here or if we can just move beyond.
How about quorum? So if we didn't hit her vote, we already have a quorum. So I think that'd be.
Okay. All right. Where do we leave off in the voting, Kristin?
Okay, next we have trustee Mono.
I was absent, so I'm going to abstain.
And then Vice Chairperson Hollingsworth.
I approve. Yes.
Okay, and Chairperson Domeyer.
I approve.
Perfect.
Great. We'll move on to the chairperson report. I have to say, I think twenty twenty two has gotten off to a really good start. We made a lot of great progress with the addition of the new personnel, obviously, our new librarian Linda and our community engagement manager. And we're working to fill out the board members. We're fully staffed up, so we we don't have issues of of not enough votes on things. And of course, last time we implemented our newly revised donations monitor. So I think things are are moving in the right direction. I'm looking forward to continuing the progress we've started throughout the new year. And we have many important tasks ahead of us, and I'm I'm really excited about this team we've assembled to to move forward and do that. And that's all I've got. Let's move on to our trustee reports. Can we start with Vice Chair Liz Hollingsworth?
Thank you. I had a virtual meeting with Kristin last week and Kristin, you're I appreciate your working so diligently. On the new budget and the donations monitor revisions continue to look good. I loved that you guys Kathy and Linda and Kristin, you included the photos of the bookmark contest winners, their darling. And I appreciated in the director and librarian reports, under the programs, you included the number of participants. And I don't know that we've ever discussed that, but I do think we pay attention to that, and that is much appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you. Trustee Chen, anything you have to report?
No, nothing. Thanks.
Right, trustee Mono.
I have the Crane Art Gallery report, but I'll wait until that comes up on the agenda.
Okay, terrific. Trustee Derry, by any chance, can you hear us or? Do you have anything to report? Okay, we still can't hear you, Lois. So if you had something to report, we we can't hear it. You're good. Okay. All right, let's now let's move on to the Crane Art Gallery liaison report.
Okay, January and February, we had an exhibit by Marie McDuffie. She's a local artist, watercolors. It was absolutely fabulous. I hope that that you all got a chance to see it. I know Linda did because I I saw some of the comment Kathy also commenting on it. Her theme was really local places and so many of of her paintings were of places in San Marino, Pasadena, South Pasadena that we're all so familiar with. She was going to have a reception, but because of that nasty little variant Omicron, it got it was called off. But apparently, many of the people that were going to come came anyhow. And that's really one of the reasons that she did so well. She sold well over half of her paintings. And so we're anticipating a fairly decent donation from her. One of the aspects of her exhibit that I I thought was particularly interesting, I think it would have been very interesting, the children that went by also is there. There's a little cabinet in that hallway. I'm not sure if you're aware that it is. It is known as the trustees cabinet. I'm not sure that the trustees, at least as long as I've been on the board, knew that we could put anything in there. But Linda Lyons, the the chair of our Crane Art Gallery Committee, takes care of of scheduling people to to use that. But in this cabinet, Marie had put in some of her sketchbooks, open to pages that that were done. It gives it it gives a non artist an idea of what a sketchbook looks like. From a very talented artist, I must say. She also had her palette in there with with some of the paint colors and the brushes and, you know, the the tools that a watercolor artist uses. And it was, I thought that was a really nice addition to just seeing her paintings. The the exhibit, to the best of my knowledge, it was supposed to come down yesterday. I I think it did. Our next exhibit won't go up until the ninth of March, a little bit of a delay there again, because the trustees cabinet had been scheduled by someone else. And so I'm waiting on that. The next exhibit is by Verdugo Hills Art Association. It's a juried exhibit. And if you're not familiar with that term juried, it means that artists submit paintings and then whoever is doing the jurying, in this case, it's an it's the artist Pete Morris. He's fairly well known in the in the Los in Los Angeles County. He will pick which paintings he feels are best. So the artists, you know, the artists have some say in it in that what they submit to be, you know, to be chosen. The title of their exhibit will be art and artistry. Most likely, they're not going to have a reception, at least at at the moment. That's what what we've been told. That the exhibit following that will be April twenty third to June third, and that will be April Drew Foster. She had a virtual exhibit with us during COVID, and we had offered to any of the artists who did virtual exhibits an in person exhibit if they so so chose to do. Once the library was open again, and we will have April's exhibit in April. I thought that was rather interesting. She definitely wants a reception. We're hoping that the the city will be allowing the in person receptions by then. If not, I would imagine that she would probably still go ahead and have a reception, but have it at a local home. But, you know, fingers crossed that we can do it at the library, because as I said before, that is historically, that's where we see artists selling their paintings. When you get a group of people and everybody's looking around and, you know, you might see somebody looking at that one painting that you kind of thought was pretty nice. And they're looking at it a little too closely. And so then you're gonna run up and say, I want that one real quick. You know, it's kind of like one of those auctions, you know, the silent auctions you go to where you hover. Whatever it takes. This is good, and it's good for the library. Our summer months are not booked yet. Yes.
Kathy, I want to let you know, you could probably count on being able to have that reception in April.
Oh, good. I had a feeling we would. Things are going at least, you know, fingers crossed. Right now, things are going in the right direction. So we we're hoping that that will happen. Our summer months, the calendar for the summer months is not filled yet. We have a we have feelers out there. We have a few people that are putting proposals together. We'll get back to you on the summer months. September and October is most likely going to be a group called the Planners. We have a proposal from one of their members, Susan Coulter. She's already submitted some of some of the works and she was she would. We were trying to schedule her in earlier in the year, but it looks like September, October will be a better time for her. November and and December is is on the calendar also, and that will be an exhibit by yours truly, if I manage to finish enough. So I will finally get get something up there for people to see. The Crane Art Gallery was established in two thousand nine as a tribute to City Librarian Carolyn Crane. It was established with restricted donations designated specifically for its formation and maintenance. The gallery has its own budget line items. I'm sure you've noticed that on our our budget reports that we get. There's a donations account and an expenditures account. The current budget monitor shows a balance of twelve thousand four hundred and twenty seven dollars. Since then, there has been a three hundred and seventy dollar check given to Jennifer to to deposit. That was the donation from our November, December of two thousand twenty one artist Fortunati, and that will show up then on next month's budget. In two thousand eighteen, we, the Board of Trustees worked very hard. I know Liz was very instrumental in this in resolving an issue of the missing donations. And I and I think from reading the minutes of what what happened in the at the January meeting, it seems like you have addressed that and you all understand what the problems were. But it is, it's a recurring concern of the Crane Art Gallery Committee, just because we were in limbo for quite a while, thinking that we'd lost all of our money because it had gone into the general fund. And so just just to let you know, if we mentioned budget often, it's because we're, we just want to make sure that doesn't ever happen again, and it looks like it won't. So so that's that's a really good thing. As far as income, as I was saying before, our, you know, past exhibits clearly show that we get, an artist gets more sales when they have a reception. We ask for a voluntary twenty percent donation, which is really, really generous on our part, because if if an artist is sellering in a gallery, they are giving the gallery forty fifty percent usually of the sale of the paintings. So that that is really good. As far as expenses, our expenses are relatively light on a regular basis. It's, you know, it's light bulbs, it's postage, things like that. But if the time comes that we need to, we need to do something better with the lighting, or if the way we're mounting the paintings now no longer works or has some issues, we will have that that rainy day little pile that we can we can draw from without having to ask ask the city for that. The committee right now, the committee for the Art Gallery Linda Lyons is the staff member who leads us. We have as members, we have Sandy Morris, who's a she's actually the original library trustee member of the committee, and she has stayed on. Deborah Sedoun is the foundation Library Foundation representative. Eva Marguerite was on the committee from from the onset, but she has recently retired from the committee as she's moved to Rancho Palos Verdes, and the drive is a little bit too much. We're in the process of looking for someone to replace Eva. Myself, I am the current library trustee member and Rosa Z, who is a former school district member, current president of the Chinese Floral Arts Association, very interested in in what is happening. The the fact that I am going to be termed out in just a few months, I wanted Chair Domeyer and the rest of the trustees to start thinking about who from the trustees will become the the current trustee member of the committee. And it's I would say it's it's likely that I will I will stay on the committee and and take the the place that Eva Marguerite has vacated, so that we may we may fill it that way, unless somebody else comes along and is absolutely desperate to do it. And then I would be willing to hand over the reins. One, one last thing, really, last, last but not least, Marie McDuffie's exhibit had to be taken down and rehung because city painters showed up unannounced. At least they were unannounced. The committee Linda Lyons knew nothing about it. This this can't happen. We need better communication. Hanging an exhibit is time consuming. It's, you know, it's a matter of getting the artist over to to help with these things. I don't know what the what the gap was. I'm not sure even that Linda Lyons understands what the the gap was in communication and why she didn't know ahead of time that this was going to happen. It's not that we didn't want the hallway painted. It obviously looks looks better with with new fresh paint. I just want to make sure that we have open communication.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you more, Linda. If I could just add, and Linda Fierich can also, yeah, we clearly, that was not a good situation. We were not pleased either, from what I remember, what I recall, Linda, help me. So we had this wonderful project that phased multiple areas of the library to the tune of a thirty thousand dollar paint project. We were glad to finally get it coordinated. We met multiple times with our public works liaison, the project manager on public work side as well as, and then he be being the go between with the painting vendor. They were wonderful. I think what happened was they started working ahead of schedule because they were so efficient. Yeah, Linda, you can unmute. And then all of a sudden, they were like on top of the next phase without telling us.
Yes.
So we were like, stop the presses. Right now, you cannot go in there. This we it is not that simple. So we we immediately grabbed the public works project manager as well as a point for the painting company. We said, stop. This is not an area that we can quickly transition. So I think it was a matter of the painters being really efficient, trying to estimate the phasing of each area of the library, and then it being well ahead of schedule. And Linda, is there anything else that I missed? How how kind of how did it happen? Right?
That was primarily it. I mean, they they moved through the top of the building, you know, the second floor as expected. And then suddenly, they were doing work around the paintings. And, you know, they were starting to patch and stuff, and we were like, whoa, 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 we're not there yet. So we do apologize.
Yeah.
But we, you know, as far as Linda not being aware, none of us were aware that it was happening the day that it was happening.
Yeah, so it was a little bit of a scramble for all of us, and we do apologize. And we apologize to Linda. We apologize to everybody. And we we backed that the contractor back and said, this is not an area that we can quickly just start, you know, pulling things down. Communication.
I can pass that along to the committee. I know everybody was a little concerned, but again, you know, just we learn from our mistakes. And, you know, again, just communication transparency. And we should all be happy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Linda, thank you for being a representative for all these years to the Crane Art Gallery and all your work. If you could take back, this is just my opinion, but spend the money. You've got twelve thousand dollars in donations. The things that you mentioned might be what ifs for a rainy day are facilities, and the city will help us with facilities. So there might be things that enhance the receptions, draw in the artists, advertising to the community, but I encourage you to spend the money.
Hey, I have a question, and I Kathy, you can probably answer this for me.
Yes.
I I went in, and this was before Christmas, Marion Fortinati had, she had a reception scheduled, and she was going to do it outside. And somewhere during that reception, the subject came up that the about the about having to apply for a permit from the county or something to to serve food at at any of these events. That that they were told that, you know, if it was inside, they would have to to do that. I it it wasn't clear what I was hearing, and I just wanted to to make sure that there wasn't some new regulation that we had to abide by.
I think that that it's a, it is the public health application when you're serving either when you serve refreshments. So anytime we, the city, are sponsoring or co sponsoring an event where there's refreshments, we have to go through the health department permit to to get that done. So.
Is this new?
No, I don't believe so, because it could, you know, that higher practice for the library, they just weren't aware that we had to do that in any city facility or or event or sponsored thing. So and and there are certain stipulations. I am not an expert yet on LA County rules. Yeah, so, but we we pulled in our recreation specialists who do manage this kind of stuff all the time with all of their events, large or small. You're still serving food and refreshments in a public setting.
Okay, right, because, you know, this is kind of historically, as long as the I can't, I'm not thinking right now back to the the library that the Crowe Library replaced, but, you know, the the Historical Society, all of these other groups come in, and they have coffee and, you know, donuts or cookies or whatever. And you know, this has been going on for. you know, this has been going on for a long time. So if, if this is something that needs to be done now, uh, in some way, we need to make that known to groups that are using the space.
Yeah, absolutely. The programmers, really it's about all of our programmers and anybody who is a liaison to any, um, uh, you know, public event or gathering. So I'm going to defer to Linda to make sure, Linda, you talk with Eddie and Victoria. Jeff was in place at that time before Linda came on board. And we, um, have to make sure that certainly during this time of COVID, uh, uh, and, and until those, those rules were in place before, I just don't think library staff knew that we needed to follow these types of health, uh, department, um, uh, applications. So Linda, um, I'm, this is kind of a new thing for Linda. She's, she's dealt with this probably in your prior jobs too, Linda, correct?
Um, usually, uh, in a library setting, the standard is, is that if it's a prepackaged item, you don't get a permit. Um, so I, the idea that we would need to go through the county health department to get a permit to hand out like bags of chips and cookies and the sorts of things that, you know, like as someone mentioned, donuts are the sort of things you take to us.
Well, I think cocoa thing, right? We're, we're making beverages like the cocoa, wasn't it? The cocoa and it was the type of, the type of refreshment being served to your point exactly, prepackaged versus making something.
Sorry, if you, if you went down to Starbucks and bought the, the coffee urns that they,
Possibly, and again, possibly they've got these, these guidelines that you have to stick to.
Uh, that, that's good to know. Uh, I mean, it does limit people, you know, making their own, um, uh, refreshments that they want to serve. But if, if it's that much easier with prepackaged, then uh, that, that would be, that would be good to know. If it's possible to have something that, something in writing that we could.
Linda will, Linda will research that and bring it forward and share and educate everybody. So, because the programmer liaisons would know, should know this and.
And my question would be, it's not up to the individual group to get the permit. This is something the library is going to do, correct?
Yes, because it's in a, it's in a city facility.
Okay, okay. So it's not something that, that whatever group comes in has to worry about.
It kind of depends if it's a rental or, and it's a standalone rental versus a city sponsored activity.
Okay.
Okay. And then we would, we should include in there a timeline, like how far ahead does this permit have to be applied for? How long does it take?
Yeah, because I think that that can be quite a lengthy process.
That, that's what I, you know, when you, yeah, LA County, I, I, you know, I have visions of three months, you know, just, um.
I appreciate Linda Vera's comment about the prepackaged items to give away, and I think that's becoming more of the norm um, during these post pandemic, hopefully days.
Yes.
So a pre-wrapped cookie from the bakery, uh, you know, small water bottles for people to pick up might be the thing to do at the receptions from this point forward.
Yeah.
And you have money to do it, Linda?
Liz wants you to spend it. Linda, are you, are you, are you, do you have more on your, uh, report?
I know that, um, that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you so much for that very detailed report. And, uh, on behalf of all the board, we look forward to your display when you finish your paintings and you, uh, have your artwork on display for all of us to see. We're excited about that.
Thank you.
I, I noticed that Hal Sfitzugu, the president of the, the library foundation is, is on the call. So just welcome to you, Hal.
Hello.
Good to see you.
Hi, hello.
Long time no see.
We're going to move on to our, our next agenda item, which is the Crane, uh, San Marino Center, uh, renovation update report. I have not attended a meeting, but fortunately we have Ken Udi here, council member Udi, who can update us on what the progress of this project is.
Yeah, we, uh, learned, the, what, the remodel was supposed to make the San Marino Center look like the library. But then we learned that the San Marino Center is on some crazy registry, so you can't change the outside look. So that then required the architect to go redo the design of the exterior, which is in process. And, uh, then we will be ready very soon for it to go out the bid. Um, Michael Throne has already did some pre-screenings. I think we have three or four contractors that are pre-screened and ready to go. And it's our goal and intent to have shovels in the ground, uh, by the fourth quarter of this year. This is assuming that we still hold on to the, the votes we need to approve this. So the next step will be, it'll be interesting to see what the final budget request or the final quotes and bids come, come in at.
And Ken, one of the things we had talked about at the last meeting, I think I had raised the question, um, i- if the, if the two buildings don't look exactly alike from Huntington, that's one thing, but from the reverse side. And obviously the back of the San Marino Center now is so nondescript and so industrial. Is there any reason that can't look as similar to the library as possible?
You know, that, that request is with the Crane Architectural Steve, so we'll, you know, I, I assume it'll be the, the best we can do because in that, the front of the library and the back of the San Marino Center just, you know, don't look very good together. So. And, and, and the intent is still to have that same communication and walkway between the two, uh, facilities. So maybe we'll just have kind of a few more bushes or something to help with the direction.
Yeah, Linda.
I, I just have a question for Ken and it's on the, the, uh, registration of the building as a historic, uh, site. Uh, I know that, uh, the, my, my husband has a, uh, an office building in Pasadena and when they purchased it, they wanted to completely gut it and, uh, re- refurbish it and, you know, change it from an industrial, uh, building to, uh, an office building. And with the, uh, city of Pasadena, the requirement was that all they had to do was leave the front the way it was and they could do anything else. And I, I would think that, and, and you didn't indicate where, if, if, if it's the state of California or where the, the registration is from, but there, there's probably some stipulations in that. So if you look closely, it might tell you uh, that, okay, all you need to do is just leave the front the way it was and then you can do whatever you want to the back.
Okay. Good, good, good to know. I'll make sure that Michael, I'm, I'm sure that Michael and, and Richard Crane are aware of that.
Yeah, they're, you know, just, they're pretty clear, uh, generally on, on what you can do. And I, you know, uh, for my own house, um, when we were asked if it would, uh, if, at the time it was, would you like your home to be a historic landmark? And, uh, we had every intent, uh, back in seventeen seventy, seventeen seventy.
How old are you, Linda?
It was the bicentennial year. The Department of the Interior was, uh, I think that they had some kind of a contest or something to see how many buildings they could get registered. Um, but they asked if we would, if we would like to have the, the home designated and we were, uh, we'd only been in the house about a year and a half and we had every intent of adding on to it significantly. And what they told us was because the designation was because of the man, we could do anything we wanted to the building as long as we made the building look as if it had always been that way.
Hmm, nice.
That was, that's what the Department of the Interior said. So it could be, there could be some stipulation because it's a women's club that that might have something to do with, uh, with the designation.
Yeah, I have no idea. And you, you look at that, that campus and Huntington looks, looks Spanish and the school district looks Spanish and the library looks Spanish. The San Marino Center looks ugly.
Yeah. I don't think you'll get any arguments there, Ken. But, uh, but I, I think, you know, before, you know, before you move forward, really investigate that, um, that historical, uh, designation and exactly what the, the parameters are on what you can do and what you can't do, because you might be surprised. You may have more latitude than, than, uh, you expect.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Linda, thanks for providing those possible loopholes. Ken, thanks for the report. Let's move on to the, uh, item number six, the Director of City Librarian Report, Director Johnson and Librarian Vera.
Hey, uh, hi, good morning, everybody again, Hal and, uh, the only person who's joined us. Um, I'm going to be starting on page thirteen of the packet, which is the, uh, staff reports basically from Linda and I. Um, personnel updates, the key ones are the fact that we, um, unfortunately did not have a successful recruitment for our full-time, uh, adult services librarian position. So we will be going out again. We had two wonderful candidates, uh, at the very end, both of which declined the offers, um, or one, we made a hard offer on another one, um, uh, had really hoped to negotiate above the salary range and we had to unfortunately tell, uh, that she was a wonderfully qualified gal, but unfortunately, um, our salary range just didn't meet her, her existing salary. She works for another municipality, um, in the valley or actually in the LA area. So then we also have a, uh, our youth services librarian is on maternity leave. So Linda and Jeff are, uh, uh, really doing double duty. We have four full-time librarians. So right now we are operating with only two. So, uh, along with, um, uh, um, a strain in our part-time staff. So, uh, I, I give Linda a lot of credit. She hit the ground running and then she's also operating with a limited capacity just to keep the schedule complete and the frontline, um, staffing levels up to where we have a good service level as a library continued to get, to get busier. Um, so, uh, that's kind of the, the personnel front. Linda, do you have anything you want to add on that? If you want to unmute yourself?
Uh, no, that's pretty much it. I mean, we're, we're excited to get the right person and who's going to complement the team and, and do a great job. And to me, I'd rather, you know, be a little under the gun now and, and working hard than rush to bring someone in who isn't quite right for the community. So, you know, these things, they, they kind of do this, but well, we'll get to where we need to be and it'll be a good fit.
Yeah.
Can I say, you're, you're, you're not alone in this regard. I, my, my guest speaker in my class last week was the HR person for the CW network and, and companies are having a difficult time finding people because people, you know, it's, it's a seller's market there. So you, you're, people are, are receiving this. Finally, workers have some more leverage than they have in the past. So it's, makes it difficult for employers, but that's, that's what life is. So thanks, thanks for not settling. Appreciate, appreciate you not bringing somebody in who's, eh, but we'll work for it. So thanks.
Liz?
I think waiting for the right person is a very key move and I understand. Are you using any substitutes to help you and Jeff maybe cover the floor while you're doing some of these other duties? Do you have a list of the substitutes that we've used in the past?
Um, right now we're not relying on substitutes. Um, we are scheduling flexibly and creatively. Um, it's, uh, given me a wonderful opportunity to, to be on the floor and to, you know, really get to know people and I see the frequent flyers and that's really nice, you know, getting to, to meet people. So, um, yeah, right now we're just, uh, we're working with the resources that we have, our, you know, our, our old faithfuls, but I was, uh, I was thinking today on the way and we're gonna, we, we're gonna have to figure out, uh, some, some alternatives just in case, but.
I know there was a retired reference librarian who's substituted in the past. And perhaps you can look up that list of substitutes and I encourage you to do that because two people doing four jobs is a little much.
Thank you.
Definitely. Okay, moving on to the next item on the, um, on our report is the fiscal year 2022, 23 CIP and operating budget development calendar. This comes to us, it's, uh, attachment number one in your packet, page eighteen. And this comes to us from City Hall. Our city manager and finance director put this overarching budget calendar together and, um, I need to bring to your attentions that, um, middle of that page, the CIP, uh, presentation is, um, and, and we have items, um, coming up on, on, uh, as part of my report here, we will talk about our current CIP, um, our current CIP submissions, but the, the purpose for sharing this calendar is to just help you guys understand, share with the board, uh, the entire budget process, but also, um, the March eighteenth and twenty-fifth dates are very, um, important dates because we would like to give the board uh, an opportunity to, uh, review our operating budget as well as our CIP submissions, okay? Prior to that preliminary operating budget study session on April twenty-second. So between the, the March eighteenth, twenty-fifth, middle of the page again, April twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, Steve, we didn't have an opportunity to talk to you about this because Marcel had just brought this to my attention last Thursday. So we would like to be able to, um, uh, and, and, and it was a little bit of a, maybe a blind spot on my part and Kristen's part that we, as part of this process, we do bring the, to the board, staff brings to the library board a draft of our operating budget after we do our session with the, uh, the finance director and city manager. So with that being said, we, Steve, we need to discuss, uh, trying to get our operating, draft operating budget in front of the, any sex. And so we would like to suggest that we, um, forego our March meeting and have a combined March, April meeting on March eleventh, if that works for everyone.
April eleventh.
Sorry, March. April eleventh. So we have an opportunity to present to you prior to taking it to, uh, as part of the overarching, um, citywide department-wide, uh, presentations that begin with council.
Why not on March twenty-eighth?
Um, because we, Kristen, help me out here. We don't meet with this. It, am I correct, Kristen, that we meet with the city manager and finance director for our staff level presentations on the
thirtieth and the thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Oh, later that week. Okay. So it'd have to be after that date. It'd have to be in April.
And then we, we looked at the fourth, Linda, Liz, we, uh, we did look at the fourth, April fourth, but we're not going to have enough time to get the packet together to hit the fourth.
You know, I, I, um, I sent Kristen some materials that I might ask her to share and later in the meeting, and they're actually from a special meeting from last March. So we've had special meetings before regarding the budget, just because of what you're saying, that to budget timeline for the city and our meeting schedule don't mesh. So I'm open to that. Um, I would however, like to leave our April twenty-fifth meeting on the calendar. On April eleventh, we can decide whether we're going to meet on the twenty-fifth or not. We may actually want to meet a second time. If we have questions on the eleventh that cannot be answered, it might be good to have them be able to answer on the twenty-fifth. We can also cancel the twenty-fifth at that time if we don't have questions.
I'll be April eleventh special, special meeting. Right?
Yes, yes.
So, so is there a consensus for us to meet on the eleven?
Yeah, let's, that, here's the, I'm, do we need a motion for this or do we just do a, a, a consensus from everybody to not have our meeting uh, in March and do an April eleventh special meeting instead? Do we need to have a motion for that? Or is that something we can just all pull everybody? Sorry, Linda, you're muted.
I, I think you can't make a motion on something that's not on the agenda.
Yeah, it's not. Agenda sized, yeah.
And so maybe what we say is, is it the consensus of the board to advise the staff?
Yeah. To advise us.
Is it the consensus of the board members to advise the staff to, number one, cancel March twenty-eighth, number two, call a special meeting on the eleventh, number three, keep the April twenty-fifth meeting. I think it's a good idea. Steve?
I, I, I think so too. Liz and I are, are, I think it's a good idea. Genevieve, what do you think?
I think it's a great idea. We, let's uh, set it this way. If we don't need to, we could always cancel it. It's much better to uh, set aside this opportunity that just in case we need it.
Perfect. Linda, what do you think?
Um, I, I, I think it's good. I, there's a possibility I will not be here on the 11th. I, the week, the, the week of the fourth. Uh, two of my grandchildren have spring break, the week of the 11th, the other two have it and I know I'm going to be required to do something. And at this, at this moment, I think I'm coming home on Sunday night, the 10th, but that is still up in the air because the plant, pan, plans are only in pencil.
Tough to be a popular grandma. Okay. And Lois, what do you think? Hey?
I'll take it any day. They're, they're definitely worth it.
Lois, and do you, any, any comment, thought or objection? Yeah, we can't hear you. Okay. Thumbs up, Lois. Good idea for us to do this. All right. Perfect. All right. Great. So we have consensus to, to cancel our, our March meeting on the 28th and have a special meeting on April 11th. And then we keep our April 25th meeting on the schedule as it is now, in case we need to have anything further to discuss at that point. And Kathy, thank you so much for, for coming up with this alternative on this little surprise that was thrown at you after we met.
I'm sorry about that. It was uh, it's just that, uh, you know, Kristen and I are still learning the ebbs and flows of the calendar and as we plan our year what we need to, you know, plan for. So um, thanks for the, your uh, patience with us as we kind of continue to get ourselves organized annually. Um, okay, so Chris.
I, I have a question and it's on calendar. We had on our trustee's calendar, uh, meeting for March 9th with the city council, is that?
I have an update.
Talking about that?
I can, I can, I was going to bring it up at the end, but I can tell you now, I did follow up with Marcella on that. She, last week, she um, uh, me that um, the uh, special boards and commissions combined meetings with council will not be happening in the, the uh, first or second quarter of, of the year. They will be moved to the fall because it's just, there's too much going on. So it, it, those are going to be um, moved to later on in the year. She, she used the term fall. I don't know exactly if that's, you know, September, October, November. So, so
Thank you.
It's, it's not, it's not off uh, anybody's radar. It's absolutely on the city manager's radar.
But it's off March 9th?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
You're free, Liz. You're free on that date.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, so moving on to the next item here that just uh, give everybody an opportunity, hopefully throughout uh, when you reviewed the budget packet, if you have any questions about the operating budget summary reports that uh, Kristen, uh, again, um, thank you so much. She does a lot of hard work to prepare these reports and um, uh, and we also have the, the donations monitor. So at this point, if you have any questions, we will field them and do our best to answer them.
Any questions, anyone?
I just, Kristen, I appreciate all your notations in the comment section. I think that really helps. It helps bring up anonymously anomalies and um, you know, other things that we need to be taking a look at. Um, on the donations monitor, and it is a little um, I'm on line 17, it looks like at some point a year ago, we budgeted $18,000 to receive from the friends, but I don't, have we received it? Are we going to receive it? And I think it's good that we don't spend it. I see no spending against that money. If we're not sure about the receipt of those funds.
Line 17 is actually the expenditure.
Oh. But how are you going to spend $18,000 from the friends?
Yeah, so that was something that Kathy and I ran into um, and we had to ask Paul about that because we were not here when this budget was developed and he told us that we, the people before us budgeted um, thinking that we were going to dip into the reserves. That's why we budgeted more expenditures than the revenues for this fiscal year.
Okay, okay. And um, one of the things that we've talked about at the other meetings, just to make the trustees aware. Kristen and I really talked about, there are funds that are designated or undesignedated by the donor. And there aren't a lot that are designated. And so we're going to look for the probably, I would say five or six donations that were designated and carried across years so that everybody knows and so that we can get that money spent the way the donor said. The Chinese language materials are the example of that that comes to mind. I think one way to um, look at this donations monitor is to get the money spent. And then we don't have to have a donations monitor. We don't have to track the donations. And I, I, I really take that to heart and I think that as I'm looking at these three enthusiastic new faces in our library, these are such great opportunities. And um, as we get into the CIPs, I'd like to talk about that a little bit more, but we welcome your great ideas in getting this money spent.
Yes, it takes staff to, we need bodies to spend money. I have the responsibility to spend money.
Yes, yes, yes. I understand. I'd love to see you buying thousands of new children's books, but she's on a leave of absence. I, I hear what you're saying there.
Yeah.
But I also, you know, as we're talking about donations and nitpicking stuff, we have money to spend and that's a wonderful position to be in.
Problem to have, absolutely. Opportunity to have. Yep. Thanks.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions about the uh, budget reports and donation report? We can keep moving here if not. Okay, uh, the, the next thing on our report was just the um, operational adjustments for March. And we had a last minute entry into this update. So we are on the bottom, I'm on the bottom of page 13, operational adjustments for March. The very last uh, sentence there, starting last Friday, February 25th. Uh, as we all know, last week, the Department of Public Health came out with the new uh, orders and uh, easing some of the masking mandates. Uh, it was pretty amazing to go to a council meeting and we didn't have to wear masks and we saw people's faces and it was and, and then walking into the library too, as fully vaccinated staff, we were allowed to not have a mask indoors should, should we choose. And I know personally, I walked in and I was like, I felt like I was doing something wrong. Like, but it's okay. I remind myself, it's okay. You don't have a mask. It's okay. So anyway, so that um, uh, and then just for the um, the board's book of knowledge. So uh, we, we are required though, to check everybody entering the building if the city chose to move in this direction. So we have a checkpoint at the um, at all city facilities, not just the library, that we um, politely ask our patrons that if they would like to come in unmasked, they first need to show proof of vaccination. So we have some very professional protocols and script that we are asking folks. Uh, it's somewhat of a um, of an exercise in, you know, a social experiment. Uh, Friday, Saturday, where the first or third day, three days, full days and mostly uh, and, and Linda is here to to um, kind of let you know about what happened over the weekend. What I saw on Friday was um, not a lot, not everybody knew about the, the eased restrictions. A lot of people are showing the card, but still airing on the side of wearing, they want to be comfortable. They're wearing their masks. A lot of, a lot of employees are happy. They don't have to uh, and some employees want to keep wearing it. Um, it's not that everybody's all about mask burning, you know, because that's not where we're at quite yet. So um, but we are following protocol citywide to do those checkpoints and we're massaging how we administer that in a very friendly, non-invasive and very professional way here at the library. And we're also helping we are, we are helping do that check for the friends and the bookshop because we know they don't have the bandwidth to do that. So we're checking for not only our library facility, but also their facility. And we'll be making little adjustments along the way this week as we check in um, uh, with the eyes, uh, you know, I'll check in with the executive team. Marcella will all, will ask us, how's it going? And then we'll make adjustments. But that's kind of where we're at with uh, the uh, COVID operational adjustments moving into March. So.
Kathy, a quick question for you. Yeah, a quick question for the, for the uh, friends bookstores. Are there going to be signage there saying you know, that, that if you are not wearing a mask, you need to show, okay?
Yeah, well, we, we, that's that checkpoint where we're going to get them before they even go in. Yes, the um, we have just yeah, we're catching people before they even go in. So that's the
Gotcha.
We didn't have a lot of time with signage. We are, we have to get our larger citywide signage from Public Works. You know, of course, we were all scrambling on Thursday and Friday. So new signage is coming for all facilities.
I, I wasn't aware that you're, where your checkpoint was going to be in terms of the physically perfect.
One choke point before you go to either a door.
Perfect, perfect.
Yeah. So any other questions about that? Comments?
Okay. Um, I was wondering for um, proof of vaccination, is that for uh, one shot, two shots, three shots?
Uh, fully vaccinated, I believe. We don't, I don't think we need uh, the uh, I, I know, you know what? I'm, I'm in a, I, I wasn't one, one shot. There, the, the
Currently, the definition of fully vaccinated does not include boosters. So if you have the full dosage of uh, whatever it was that you took, that is fine. The third dose is not under consideration at this time.
Got it. Thanks.
We are using a guideline from Department of Public Health uh, as to what we have to look for. They've provided us with those tools. And so we're following those, those guidelines as to if you're checking, this is what you're looking for. So Linda, do you have that handout in front of you? But you, you, I think Linda has it right. Yeah.
Liz, you have a question and then, and sort of.
How will this impact bringing back various volunteers? TikTokers for the read, the reading program in the summer?
If there is, if there, if there are volunteer for the city, they fall under the city uh, a, a city um, volunteer policy and they have to be fully vaccinated to do anything on behalf of the city.
And um, is this going to bring us closer to uh, resuming in-person trustee meetings?
I knew that was coming too, and we talked about that. Um, I, uh, again, that's a council uh, decision. I don't know if Ken, Ken's not with us, I don't think anymore, but um, that hopefully, you know, is um, again, it's not a semi-call. So, but we, we will be asking City Hall, the, the city manager and council, so that hopefully standby, more to come on that. Yeah.
Linda, you had a question?
No, that was my question.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Yep, I, I, I talked to, to Lind, uh, Kristen and Linda this morning. We were saying, okay, trying to make sure we had all the information for you guys this morning and anticipating questions. And I knew this would be one. So tomorrow at our executive team meeting, as we all kind of navigate um, all these new announcements, I will absolutely be asking and I'm sure that that's, you know, all, all the special boards and commissions are asking the same thing. So yeah. Oh, Ken jumped off. He had to go to another call. So um, anyway, so keeping moving on here, if we don't have any other questions, let me get um, myself organized. Okay, that goes to, I'm going to page 14, uh, virtual town hall. This is at the top of page 14. Our department, um, community service is going to be featured. This flyer right here, oh, it doesn't show up. There it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Right here. So uh, myself, Eddie and uh, Linda will be leading that on behalf of the department. So we encourage uh, the board to, if you have time, jump on that call. Um, in case, you know, you'd like to weigh in on anything, ask any questions, our, our department is, is spotlighted next Monday uh, the March 7th at 6 o'clock. Any questions on that? Okay, uh, next is board recruitment update. Um, this is what uh, the information that I got from the city clerk's office. It's pretty much that's all I know uh, about the update is that um, they're taking, they're reviewing an ordinance and um, on March 9th at the council meeting. So if you'd like to dial in on that and see what kind of discussion council has on boards and commissions, I would encourage you to um, get that firsthand knowledge at that meeting. And then questions?
No, I just wanted to make a comment. I mean, this is pretty much what we've been told, at least for the last 12 months, if not longer. So I personally, I'm getting really tired of city council dragging its feet.
Well, it's on the agenda, so I think.
I know, but that's what we, again, we, we've been told that for over a year. It's on the agenda. We're going to, we're going to figure it out and they're just not doing it. And I, it, it's gone beyond frustration.
I hear you. And I, I'm excited to see that it's actually on the agenda though. So I don't think it has been on the agenda. So some progress is being made.
I realize that um, we might be getting into a longer meeting on April 11th. But may I suggest that board recruitment be an agenda item on that agenda so we can revisit it. You can report what the city council decided at their March meeting and where we're at. Hopefully recruitment will be open by that time. Um, maybe not. You said March 9th is their meeting?
Yeah, yeah, it's right there. March 9th, council will be reviewing an ordinance, making updates related to all boards and commissions for the city.
So between March 9th, April 11th is ample time to be able to develop a report on what they said in March.
And I would encourage any board members to attend that city council meeting to raise our concerns, this ongoing issue, because as Linda says, it's been a year.
At least.
At least.
Yeah, I, I think we're saying the same thing. I see Genevieve and Lois shaking their heads and um, this is not an agenda, a, a vote, but um, I'm one, in the past, when we've had strong feelings about a topic, we've asked the chair or vice chair to email the city council. And I'm wondering if in anticipation of their March meeting, if this is something that we can by consensus, ask Steve to do on our behalf, or Steve, I do that, put my money where my mouth is. But we're on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we encourage you to do, you know, quick and diligent and, and deep dives on recruiting for not only the library board, but all the boards and commissions. And the recti, commission, but that's a different topic. Okay.
I, I don't think that's a bad idea. And um, and, and if by consensus, everybody thinks that's a good idea, I would be happy to review what Liz will compose. And send to me, we can, we can do it as a team effort.
Uh, you have my permission to sign my name to whatever the two of you come up with.
Thank you, Linda.
I trust you.
Genevieve, what do you think?
Support that.
Lois? Oh, that looked like she agreed to me. Lois, we still can't hear you. Give us a thumbs up. Perfect. Okay.
Perfect.
All right.
Okay, moving on, uh, the library board of foundations, we included, then we move on to the, and you saw the, the comment on the um, bookmark uh, contest winners. And that was really the only thing that um, Cindy and, and that uh, board was, were sharing. They did not meet in February and they were zooming in March. Then we get to our um, uh, upcoming events. We'd like to share the calendar of all the exciting things we have going on here at the library as well as the recreation division. Um, then, so does anybody have any questions about any of that before we move on to, on to pass the uh, microphone over to Linda to discuss kind of any, or take any questions around uh, programming? That's right. Okay, so um, let's see, moving on, we will go on to uh, page 15. And that begins Linda, Linda's uh, part of this and uh, any, any questions on uh, programming? And any, any questions on programming that we have upcoming or or prior, it's actually used our prior reports over the last month.
So we were able to transition and do our programs outside the Huntington Nurses Health Screening. And, you know, some of the Chinese club programs, which was great. The Huntington Nurses Health Screening, they're talking about bringing on a second nurse. Because they feel like they're, you know, great. And I really, I think it speaks to the library being able to support a certain quality of life. That I see as part of our mission. The other thing is, you know, with all of these, these programs. I've been trying to emphasize as we promote our programs. That we are here supporting everybody's informational needs. And I think that you sort of get a wide breadth of that, you know, so for baby lab set, making sure that we're, we're really getting started. With those early literacy needs, promoting lifelong learning for everybody, including the, you know, the. The Libby, making sure people know how to access those books and those ebooks, so that way they can get what's important to them. So, you know, everything, even the the kits that we provide, those are done with thought and with care. Children learn with their bodies, right? And they're learning fine motor skills, gross motor skills. We're encouraging them to observe those seasonal changes that are the foundation of environmental science. So, you know, I think you can, you can go through and read the particulars of any one program or all the programs, obviously. But I just want to impress upon you that what we do, we do with care and with forethought. And it is all meant to encourage creativity and curiosity. And again, lifelong learning.
Okay, thanks, Linda. Um, so one thing I think I'd like to kind of, Linda, you can stay unmuted. But the passport program is going bonkers. It's absolutely going bonkers. And we are, we are by appointment only still, but we are having to train new people. Because that is a very high demand service that we are providing and exceeding all budgeted targets for this year. Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's again, people are are COVID fatigued and ready to go. And they're ready to travel. So. Moving on, after that is the middle of the page sixteen, Public Works Projects, the current ones that we have. Painting, the painting project is complete for the most part. And then we do are working with Public Works to get Story Walk finally finished at Lacy Park. And the targeted timeframe for that is May. And then we'll kick off end of May, correct, Linda?
Yeah, but I even have the book. Yeah, we're all ready to to install, I think.
Yeah, the really quick update that I have for you related to marketing communications that I think is very interesting. You know, despite lack of dedicated resources in and and expertise on marketing and communications, at least on the CSD staff. We have been able to cobble together efforts to be active and. On social media through Facebook and Instagram. And as we track those by month, we do have an increase of our, in our following of six percent. Or excuse me, up six in Facebook or one percent. So we're up a little bit. Instagram. We're showing a few more followers. And again, we'd love to see those bigger, but at least it's not going backwards. People are not, not following us. So we're growing a little bit locally. We're not that big of a town. So we're reaching a few more folks in our community to follow us on social media. So that brings us to pretty much the end of of the staff report, director's report. We will move on to item seven, if anybody doesn't have any other follow-up questions to our overall report.
I have a, Linda, you first.
Yeah, I have, well, a question, a comment. With the the tracking of the social media, the hits that you're getting on Facebook and Instagram. The only one that I hear that I could compare to actual programs was the Valentine's Day Take and Make, which. You have two hundred and eighty-four Instagram. Hits on that and forty-one participation. I I'm just, I'd be curious, I mean, can we combine these numbers in a way that we can see? I I think would be, you know, it's one thing for people to say, you know, I, I mean, I have friends that just go down. They like everything they see.
Right.
Doesn't mean that they're reading it or that they even care about it. And so I think there's a, there's an important correlation between the number of of likes that you get on, on social media. And the number of people who actually do something about that like. That that combined then with my comment that there were no press releases. I think I see that as problematic because not all of our patrons use social media.
Right.
Younger, younger patrons do. Some of us old folks do, just so that we can see pictures of our grandchildren. But I think there's, I think we still have a significant. Audience that 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 would. Be much more interested in seeing it in the, you know, San Marino Tribune or Pasadena Star News. And, you know, if we could have something or just anything every, every month, you know, one, at least one article a month. Or kind of maybe set a a goal of two articles a month. I mean, the the those beautiful bookmarks, that would have been a great.
They, that was in the paper and that's the Foundation's program, not ours. And we would love to be able to be more proactive and champion and announce upcoming programming and announce. But that we currently do not have anybody on staff that has that dedicated job duty and responsibility. To manage marketing and communication function. I, it was my goal to get that proposal pushed through our budget. And I was told no new positions, not even part-time. So we rely upon the the City Hall and the marketing communications folks there, number one. If we do make that request, I think they would try to fit it in because those jot, those responsibilities do fall in a couple of positions over at City Hall. I I'm not to say that it's because we we ask and they they didn't do it, because I think that was not the case. We have to first start that request. And I think with this, all the staffing gaps that I've had, we just haven't been able to be out of this. Out of reacting mode and into proactive mode. And marketing communications takes planning, and I couldn't agree more, press releases, that's why I have it on here. I love to say, we had, we pushed out two press releases a month.
I I think, may, if I could make a suggestion, then I think it would maybe make more of an impact where you, on your, your, you know, CPL in the news, where you have none. Say, yes, the the Foundation. Had an article in the paper. And because it, that technically is the library.
Yeah.
You're, you're absolutely right. We missed that. And the way we pull that is I ask a staff member, we have a staff member to that. And Linda, just so you know, we've used Jennifer to do that function to Google and make sure that if, because sometimes we don't always see stuff in the paper.
Right.
Can embed that link and share with you guys. So we missed that. I apologize. That falls to our admin support. We ask them, please keep your eye out on, for, you know, anything in the local paper or anything regionally. Or within a ten mile radius. So you're absolutely right. We could have included that.
But it it also serves then as a recognition of the Foundation for doing that. And I think that's important.
And it was in the paper, because I had asked Cindy to please, she wanted to announce it in the paper, of course, the announcement council. And so we did talk about that. I just forgot to mention it.
Thanks, Linda. Liz had a question too.
One of the really important ways to get the word out about the whole Community Services Department. Library and Rec is through the school newsletters, particularly Carver and Valentine. It reaches thousands of email boxes. And the the track meet and the change of date and track meet has been in there for Carver and Valentine. If you don't receive those every week, you should. And that's, that's an opportunity. And that's a quick email from a librarian. We've been talking about these marketing and publicity issues for years. And it, we have been trying to rely on a non-existent person at the City Hall. It seems to me, especially because you're in a hiring mode, that we look at our existing library personnel. And perhaps make part of someone's job duty, these kinds of announcements. I want to move on to Story Walk, and I'd like a little bit more information about Story Walk. It's going to launch in May. What, what is that launch going to look like? Is it going to be publicized? Are we going to invite families and kids? Because it's in May and school ends May twenty eighth, I think. Um, how is that going to mesh with getting kids interested in the summer reading program?
So I think you're asking.
A lot of questions.
A communications campaign. That that's a marketing communications function and a communication campaign. That, you know, I I can certainly work with Linda, but Linda, if you could unmute, please. So, you know, we, and I do want you to know that we, I want to back Liz to your first comment about. About delegating this duty and responsibility to an existing staff member. We do not have anyone on staff that isn't A, on the front line in the library, okay? And not, and we, and unfortunately, we don't have anyone with that level of duty and responsibility within their job description.
They don't know how to send an email, Kathy? Get some substitutes to cover for.
Would fall to Linda then, or the programmers to make sure. So that's a program function. That is a marketing communications of a, from a programmer. Linda? She's asking about Story Walk and in a communications campaign and that plan. If I understand, you're shaking your, right, Liz?
Yes.
So what is your, yeah, so.
And and if you don't have it today, if you could bring it back for our April meeting.
Okay.
And I guess the same thing about the summer reading program, if you could also put that as an agenda item for our April meeting. Theme, plans for school outreach, use of student volunteers. Are we using Beanstack? Is it being funded by the state? Are you purchasing prizes, T-shirts, posters? Are we purchasing an outdoor banner? There's a lot of stuff about the summer reading program, and I'm getting in depth because I'm worried because Tara's gone.
Well, currently, I am the only one to order books for adults, for children's, and to plan these programs. So it's, we're, you know, we're doing the best that we can. I'm not really sure, you know, is there anything in particular that you're?
Yes, if you, if you could come back and just give us a report on how you're preparing for the summer reading program. How you're going to start publicizing it in early May, so that when school is out in May, it starts right away with no lag. And how are you going to outreach? The theme, plans for outreach, mostly to Carver and Valentine? Are you going to use student volunteers through NCL or the high school, as has been done in the past? Or will they report on Beanstack? Is Beanstack being funded by the state as it was last year for this program? Are you purchasing prizes? Are you purchasing T-shirts for the staff to wear? Done in the past? I mean, all those things.
Are wonderful, absolutely wonderful suggestions. And we will take all of these recommendations. I will work with Linda to come up to speed. She has managed a a program like this.
Yes.
Provide with a update on our plan, our program outreach plan and communications plan. As part of the next, our our next meeting. Prior to March, or prior to the May launch, we will, we will fit it in somewhere. Steve, do you have a comment?
Yeah, Kathy, I was going to ask, would it be helpful for Liz to send you an email of what her suggestions are, the details?
Linda.
Well, it sounds like it's everything that is summer reading clubs. So I I've been doing summer reading clubs for, you know, about five or six years now. So I, you know, I was looking for a priority and it sounds like the priority is everything. So I I have a sense of what that entails.
Thank you. I'm glad you've done it before.
I'm going to volunteer Liz here. I I wondered if it would be helpful if maybe Liz and I came in and sat down with you. To see if there was anything, you know, that we could help with kind of the, you know, the historical background of what. Crowe Library has done in the past and what, you know, what's been.
Been here managing this program for years. So I don't know that we, and Tara is not, she is on maternity leave. But I don't think she's adverse to, you know, sharing over a quick phone call, some of that, some of that back knowledge. And and with Linda's, even though she wasn't doing it here, they did pass practice in another place or, you know. So I don't know that we really need that, a special meeting for that. Linda, do you think with between, that I I think you have a handle on it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just, we're here in case you need us, I guess. I really want to say.
And I think we can also either personally, I would give you some time and I could help you with some of the outreach. And we might be able to find some volunteers, but that's something we would need you to tell us. And we're very happy. Kathy, my concern is right in your report that it says Tara's on maternity leave until May. And so much needs to be done. And I'm so, we are so lucky, Linda, that you have done this before. And that I think part of your heart is in children's services. So thank you. I I bring it up because I don't want it to go away. It's one of the most important things that the library does. Not only to keep reading, to not have the summer slump, but also you're developing patrons.
Yes, I've been doing summer reading program for, you know, a couple of years over multiple libraries. So I'm definitely keyed into the priorities and the objectives of what that is.
And Linda, if I could just point out, we have two board members who are going to be losing at some point. And I think what you're hearing is you've got two fantastic volunteers you can take advantage of moving forward. Both Liz and Linda have a passion for this. So and and the fact that they're still willing to donate time and and effort. Once they're off the board is really good. So please take advantage of that.
Thank you.
And I I don't travel in the spring generally, so I can.
Kathy, where are we now?
Yeah, we are on item seven, discussion.
On the discussion, okay.
On to item seven, new business, discussion of your twenty twenty-two, twenty-three capital improvement plan projects. So, and this is a action item. There's a staff report starting on page twenty-five. And we wanted to, under the discussion portion, we also have three attachments that hopefully you've had a chance to look at. What you're looking at is the computer room renovation for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. So that the next fiscal year that we're currently planning for, okay? This project was moved, I believe, from last year's or this current year to, it's pushed out a year. And it is the twenty-five thousand dollar donation for twenty-two, five from the Foundation. It's the renovation. And again, that is up for consideration through the budget process for approval. Okay? The other two items are the security camera system and the bar community room, audio visual upgrades. Within your packets, you have our CIP budget request form with descriptions. The two comments I would like to make before taking any questions. Or maybe three comments. So our Public Works Director oversees the CIP plan for the cities. And he, along with City Manager oversee kind of this process. And we, as a department, push these projects forward. So. So we we had discussed the security camera system. The special note on that one is that is going to be part of a bundled citywide initiative for a security camera system. This is not a standalone capital item for this property. It's going to be bid as part of a citywide initiative that Michael Throne will be leading. We put together this, you know, on behalf of this property. But then from what I don't know what that's really going to look like. Because again, that's that's kind of Michael's role as our city engineer and our Public Works Director, person in charge of all city facilities. And then the other comment I want to make on these items is is on the third item, excuse me. The Barth Community Room Audio Visual Upgrade, that is going to be bundled with the San Marino Center construction project, that renovation project, the tech upgrades. So any of the AV technical upgrades that are going to be part of the San Marino Center new equipment, they would like to purchase and evaluate so we can have similar age equipment at both facilities and similar products. So that so we don't have, you know, all these different types of equipment where we have to find different vendors. So Michael was in agreement that that is, that is, it's it's in, it's being budgeted for, but they're being bundled for for different types of projects, not just standalone projects.
I have a question on the Barth Community Room Audio Visual Upgrade. I understand the bundling and the the significance of having it done together with the community center. But the fact that the community center is a little bit in limbo until they get final approval. What is the, you know, worst case, again, I'm thinking worst case scenario, what happens if the community center does not go through?
Well, I think we would, we would, I would tell Michael and City Manager, I would say, well, we still have this need. So we're not going to take it, then it would be maybe pulled out. And we would say we would still like this to be considered because we still have to keep operating the bar.
Right.
We need this upgraded equipment to be able to use the room, so.
Well, we do, and the and the fact that this has been part of the of our capital budget request for since before COVID, because it was before COVID that we initially talked about this as an individual project. And then, once the community center project got started, it seemed the right thing to do, the the the, you know, most
Prudent.
Prudent, yeah, thank you. The most prudent way to to go about this was to combine them. And I mean, it makes perfect sense, and I would love to see that happen. But I, you know, I guess I've got a little bit worried when when Ken was talking earlier about needing approval. And there, and I know there are voices out there that not everybody in town is is 100% behind this. So I just, I, you know, worst case scenario, I don't want the library to suffer.
This item was actually brought forward by City Council liaisons to our board. And it was two to three years ago. And the reason was that during the San Marino Center renovations, the City Council may need another location for their Friday meetings. And the bathroom would be it. And it was our effort to do the AV upgrades as well as lighting upgrades, which I do not see in the CIPs. And it was to make it habitable for the City Council during that time. This isn't a huge project. There is should not be much hard wiring. It should all be Wi-Fi. And I would like consensus of the board members or to discuss this and your feelings. But I believe this is page 29. And I believe the bottom capital cost estimates by year, rather than fiscal year 23, 24, it's my suggestion to make it fiscal year 22, 23. I wonder what the other trustees think about that.
I concur with Liz.
Liz, moving it to this year because just to make sure it gets done or what what's the, what's your idea behind that?
I think to move it for fiscal year 22, 23, because the upgrades are needed, whether it's the Historical Society, the School District, another group coming in for rentals, including the Chinese Club. I know they used all the displays when I went to the calligraphy classes. But mostly to get it done before the San Marino Center renovations. Because any groups using the San Marino Center now may move to the bathroom during that period of time, and I'd like to see it done sooner than later.
And we can still, they can still use the same contractor and they can still use the same products that will be.
Well, they won't know what the San Marino Center, that's probably one of the last things to design.
Absolutely. Express to the City Manager and the Public Works Director that the board would like to, and I don't know if we need a motion, probably need a motion for this, Steve.
Yeah, I think I think so.
We're not done yet. I don't, I don't, I'm not ready to make a motion.
Oh, okay. So if I'm here.
Story Walk is not on here, and I assume that's because it's funded. Is Story Walk all paid for?
Yeah, Story Walk, Story Walk was part of the operating budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Including any concrete from Public Works or other digging the holes?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Kristin, if I remember incorrectly, Story Walk was, Story Walk was already budgeted for in the operating, on the operating side.
That's what I recall as well.
Yep.
Thank you. Kristin, I sent you a document that's I I wanted to say March 2021, but I think it's March of 2020. And it's from our board meeting, March 20th of 2020. Can you share? Not.
Screen share with us, is that what you're asking?
Thank you. Thank you. So this was updated March 9th of 2020 for a special meeting. And it's really, I think, exciting to see all the things that have been accomplished, like the entry canopy, the Barth AV room, that was a priority. March 9th and look in progress, completion by June of 2020. It's exciting, the public use computer replacements are done. But then below the gray line are some of these other projects, the bathroom lighting, window tinting, yay, it's done. Computer room renovation is on the list. Bottle watering station is done. The Thornton Conference Room Display is not currently a CIP, and it's not done. Can you end, but it's not a big ticket item. Can you go down? Thank you. There's the Barth lighting upgrades, the security camera system. And the security camera, if other trustees will help me make sure I remember this correctly, I believe that was put on by Chief Rueda. Because he's the one a couple of years ago who did an analysis of what security was needed at the library. The board will, at that time, supported him, but I don't think it was a real need because criminals don't steal books. They might vandalize the facility, but we don't have a big theft problem. And then the program of facility management software, yay, that was on. I think Civic Rec was part of that, and then another internal management system. So these are things that we've been looking at. Kristin, can you go back up one page? And I'm wondering, like the bathroom lighting, the Thornton Conference Room Display, if those could be added as CIPs.
For the conference room display, are we talking about just getting a portable projector?
Or? I think you already have one of those and we've used that before. It's to put a flat screen, a large flat screen monitor on one of those walls, have something like an Apple TV or a Chromecast by Google to Wi-Fi connect to that display so that people having small meetings, like if we were in the Thornton Room right now, you would be sharing this document up on that display.
A monitor.
Yes.
Or it's more of a monitor, not a display or a, you know, a digital screen.
Yes, and and then the whatever is the Wi-Fi component, you know, like an Apple TV or Chromecast to capture the information to the display or monitor. I believe that what's his name, Robert Zubiet.
Yeah.
Had a plan for this.
This would not be a capital item that we could probably just budget for that. It has to be over 5,000. So this would be the operating, we could just add it into operating.
Great, and Kathy, I would be one to bring forward to spend some donations money on that. So that might be something to take a look at again. I would like to see that, the the display, and I guess then the lighting. One of the things, Kristin, can you go down one more page? One more page? Okay. The reservation server, I don't know. I think that was Civic Rec. News and information monitors are already in the library, that was done. And then items move the interior painting, renovating the young adult area and upgrading seating and furniture. I don't know that those meet the $5,000 threshold, but I'd like to see you have it on a list, whether it's a capital improvement project or equipment that you take to the city or that you spend our current donations money on. Or you say, hey, foundation or hey, friends, we need some room to, money to renovate the young adult area. It looks great repainted, now we got to redo the furniture. I bet also in some of the main library area, it looks great repainted. But it makes you realize some of those chairs need to be recovered. Some of the legs of the chairs need to be redone. And so what I'm suggesting is if it doesn't meet the CIP threshold, maintain a list that has CIP and kind of wish projects or operational maintenance so that we all know where we're moving to. And should Hal, who I think still is on this call, have money from the foundation, you have some projects ready to say this is what we need help with. For the purpose of today, I think that moving the bathroom AV to the 22, 23 year and adding the lighting to be a project would be my recommendations for the CIPs going forward.
And do you want to make a motion in that regard, Liz?
Well, I'd like to hear from some of the other trustees because they might not agree or they might have other things. Or the public, if Hal is still on the line.
Does anyone else have any comments in this regard?
Just wanted to support what Liz has been saying. I think that the, you know, the fact that we have that that there are so many items that have been on our agenda in the past that somehow have fallen through the cracks for one reason or another. Most reasons quite legitimate, especially with what we've gone through the last two years with COVID. But I think it's really important not to forget. We we need to, and I, anything that I I definitely support anything that can be done without having to put it through capital projects if it's under the, under the threshold. Yes, I I'm in favor of of what Liz has been saying.
Yeah, I think there's the the value of having two of our longstanding members here is they remember things from two and three years ago. And and stuff does fall through the cracks. You look at March 9th, 2020, gee, what happened the following week? Oh, yeah, pandemic. So there's, there is reasonable, there could be good causes why these things fell through, but we do need to stay on them. What what else, Janine Eve?
I have to support this too because I remember those items when I first joined the board. And it felt like they just went on and on. It was not done and definitely supporting this, try to have things done that needs to be done. And so we don't have to continue add on to the list.
I think Hal.
Lois?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. No, it's okay. Go ahead, Liz, you're going to say something, Liz?
Hal just messaged me that he agrees. I'm not sure what, so he can unmute and speak, but.
Yeah, go ahead, Hal.
Yeah, yeah, I'm glad to be here. It's really enlightening to hear this diverse conversation. Yeah, you know, we're the, we're the Crowe Library Foundation, and we're here to help. There's anything that you need from us, let's talk about it. I do go through the board for any approvals, for any requests. But I think it's a good idea, Liz, that you put everything on the table so that we could take a look at it to see where we could be the most available for assistance. So I think that that goes into what we're looking at is give us a list of things that you are lacking or lacking funding for. And then let's work something out. For us, you know, we we kind of work on on demand, I guess, to lack of another term, is that once we seed a list, we would go into a fundraising mode. Within the last few years, there hasn't been much out there. But with a refreshed list, we can go back to the board and see what we could fund. We have money available in our existing budget. So it's something that we would seriously look into. But for things that are much higher, we would like to take that, I would like to take that to the board and say, hey, we need some fundraising types of programs to fund the library. But, you know, long story short, we're there to help the library. And we're we're there to help fund anything that you may be lacking through the state budget process or the city budget process. So long story short, we're here to help.
Well, I
Thanks, Al.
I get chills hearing you say that. And the foundation has done so much for the library. And especially all the work that went into creating an endowment. And that you're willing to do the fundraising, not only for the endowment, but other needs our library staff comes up with, I I think that's fabulous.
Yeah, I mean, I think it comes at a good time because we're coming out of the pandemic. Our board members are chomping at the bit about what we can do to help support the library. We've been looking at the list, it's it's kind of like, it is kind of outdated.
Yeah.
Yeah, things maybe need to be updated and revised. But once, once the city and the board all agree, we're we're there behind you. So we're we're kind of excited to hear this type of interaction going right now.
Look at that.
Thanks so much, Al.
On our librarian's face.
Nice, huh, Linda?
There's $62,000 in the reserved restricted account that your trustees look over. And then Hal's offering more money. Linda, you're in the right place at the right time.
You know, Liz, thank you. So if you didn't have, I think Steve mentioned earlier, all of this history and the background, it'd be like reinventing the wheel, you know. So thank you so much for having these lessons things because, you know, it would, you're saving us some smoothing here. So thank you.
Well, and Linda, you mentioned earlier that because of the staffing issues, you're spending a lot of times in some other areas with other employees. And just keep this in the back of your mind as there might be programs or materials or equipment that's needed to make it a better environment. So you keep, you start your list too. I would like is this a motion or a consensus?
It seems like it's it's an agenda item to discuss the CIP. Kathy, you were looking for us to review the three projects and suggest any new ones. So it seems like a motion would be appropriate.
Yes.
A motion to move to.
And I think I'm also hearing, I've heard. And I think I'm also hearing, I've heard um. One actionable thing or two, you know, the moving. The Barth Community Room to the this fiscal year. Um, and not having it bundled with the San Marino Center for the the twenty-four fiscal year. So adding it to twenty. But then also we need to update the list. Okay, that's an outdated list and then you know, we need to scrub that list clean, bring it bring it up to current day. Um, and then suggest any new CIP projects. So um. I I don't know that I heard we 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 scanned the list. But I don't know if it was a really organized conversation to be able to say we are suggesting XYZ new programs. I don't know that we're there yet because we use.
I don't appreciate it.
List.
I I don't think you necessarily need to be there.
No.
Because you're all still um very experienced, very bright, but still new to this library. And I think um one of the things on the document from March twenty twenty. That um Kristen was sharing is it's called a capital priority list. It's not necessarily just the things that we take at this stage to the city council. Um, and so it can include small or big things. It's what we're going to use to say, let's take this to the city council. Let's take this and ask the foundation. Let's ask the friends about this. Um, and where we need money from. Um, I'd like to make a motion. It's three parts.
Yeah.
Um. Please update this capital priority list for staff to update a capital priority list and place it on our May agenda. For the CIPs that were presented to us, there were three pages to approve with the amendment to the Barth AV to make that a fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three item. And for the um. Chairperson or his vice chairperson to email the city council members that the library board has consensus with what the staff is presenting with the CIPs. And that we wish to move the bathroom up a year. That's my motion.
Great. Do we have a second?
This Barth email council.
Second.
Linda, second it. Um, any other discussion on this? Uh, Liz, can I ask you a question about the emailing the the uh the motion to email the council about this, just to inform them what our change is?
Yes, and if I might say, um. I I think Linda Molno pointed out that and and obviously this list from twenty twenty. That some of these things just haven't been done and some of it is understandable because of COVID, but some of it to me personally is not understandable. And it's um I feel that there are many times where the Public Works Department puts off the library till the last. And um if if this is simply being tabled for a year because of what Public Works can or can't handle, I don't buy that. Thank you.
I I will also, if if I could comment on this and and say that I think a lot of times everyone approaches things from their own perspective, and I think when it comes to public works. Obviously, they want to do things in the most efficient way possible for them. And I think I shared the board's concern that the San Marino Center, which there is a slight chance it may not happen. I think it's going to happen. But again, waiting all that time to update the the Barth AV stuff. It to Liz's point is, you know, is is silly to wait that long. If if while that's being done, things need to move into the bathroom. So we we really need to have that. That room upgraded and and brought up the speed so it can be used while the San Marino Center is being constructed. So. Um, I I think their perspective of, hey, be more cost efficient, easy for us if we just did everything at once. Now it's. Good to maintain beyond. That's a great perspective for them to have. Us as library board members, we're going, hey, our facility needs to be brought up to speed and we said so back in March of twenty twenty. Any other discussion on this other than my rant? All right, let's let's have a vote then. Let's call for a vote.
Okay, trustee Chen.
Yes.
Trustee Derry.
Uh, thumbs up? Was that a thumbs up?
Yes.
Okay, uh trustee Molno.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Hollingsworth.
Yes.
And Chairperson Doemeyer.
Yes. And so uh Liz, you're you that's another email you and I are going to work on to send to council. Great, thank you.
You want to do it the same way?
Well, yeah, yeah, the yeah, let's do it the same way. Of course, you you're doing this the day before I'm leaving town, but that's fine.
Okay, I'll get to it.
Um, okay, number, uh, we move on to agenda item number eight, our final agenda item, the discussion of possible board liaison roles to the friends and the foundation. Uh, this notion would be for us to have one of the board members be someone who is is the direct liaison with the foundation. Obviously, my heritage of being a member of the foundation for a long time is helpful. Having Hal on the call today is is nice as well, but this is a notion to have. Uh, one of the board members, you know, obviously, one of my concerns in coming aboard was to forge stronger bonds between the three library support groups, the two. Financial support groups, the friends and the foundation, and then our board as well. I think uh having that the strong. Um, uh, direction provided by the board to the other two support groups is is very important. You heard Hal say, look, give us a list and then we know what to go forward there. So I think um having liaisons would would be very beneficial in that regard. Discussion, comment, thoughts? Linda?
I just want to say that that was something that I tried to promote also. Uh, I really think that that. The library can only benefit by the are the three groups working very closely together. Uh, because I'm going to be termed out uh shortly. Um, I have um. I am thinking, I haven't said anything, so this is kind of just between you and me and the board here. I've been thinking about uh joining the friends and if um and even though I'm only going to be here for a few more months. I'd be happy to be the representative to the friends. It would give me a little bit more information about uh what they're doing and um help me make my decision.
I think.
Terrific.
Great idea, and I'm also termed out in May, so it's really easy for me to say that. Because I only have a few more months, but um. Another option could also be that because you're moving to quarterly budget and donations reports. That that those be particular meetings that you invite, like Hal is here today. Um, or Kathy or Shelley from the friends, um or your trustee representative at those budget meetings.
Right. Genevieve, thoughts?
I think it's a great idea.
Well, with two very valuable member of our board is going to be leaving, I think we really need a um grand plan. What's uh. Going to happen in the future. So we probably need to. Delegate to different people for different roles. And at this point, I think it's more of uh of waiting on new member to come onboard. Or should we have a grand plan or we're just go. As we see fit.
Well, my thought would be, um, it it would be since we're going to be bringing new board members on, it would be nice if they had some way to get their feet wet beforehand. Bless you, Kristen. Um, I mean, the fact that Linda volunteered to to be the liaison to the friends is a great help that just even those. Few months can give us a a a sort of testing the waters to see how things go rather than hit the new people with. Hey, in addition to be on the board, you're going to do this too. So having a template for them, I think would be a great idea. If someone could volunteer to do that for the foundation. Someone, someone who's not terming out.
I'm just trying to be a fly on a wall, but um, uh, I mean, we have always been a supporter of the trustee. Uh, and having uh us uh be your funding mechanism uh for as long as we've existed. Um, I I think that this is a great idea to have the three prongs, the trustee, the friends and the foundation come together. Um, uh, at certain critical points uh where we could uh collectively make a decision on these uh. Um, needs for the library and us also of of what strategies we could pursue in the future. So. It it will be there. Uh, we have uh an executive director Cindy that is is really on par with what's going on at the library. Uh, in fact, um, you're mentioning, you know, these uh. Uh, uh, LA County permit. She's been doing that forever for us with these um uh funding. And these foundation events. So you know, you could lean on her. Um, we don't have a problem with that and she's really willing to help out in any way. We just don't want to step on anyone's toes at the city. So that we're we're kind of like listening and and if if you want our opinions, we'll provide it for you, but. In essence, we're just support, uh, we're not just support, we're support for the 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 library. Um, and and the decision makers such as the trustees and uh we'll be there for you guys. Um, and thank you very much. I wanted to, before I forget, thank you very much for supporting the the bookmark contest. I think it went really well. And um in it, keep in mind, you know, with the city as well, uh, that. These bookmark contests are not really foundation. It's really the it's supporting the library as a whole and it brings visibility. Uh, and uh to the library, especially in the youth age. So. Um, it brings them to become aware of the library, become aware of the resources. And big and they're they're the future of the library. So we want to keep them uh integrated as part of our. Our our um outreach to the community and that means the youth as well. So. Um, we we thank you for supporting the bookmark contest and hopefully we can do this for a very long time.
Hal, thanks so much. We appreciate all that your you and your organization does and and I. I I think it's an important relationship to continue and whatever we can do in that regard, we we really appreciate all that you do. And and don't you think that. Having someone like maybe Genevieve as a liaison to your group would be a really good thing. Don't you think that'd be good? Wouldn't that be nice? Wouldn't that be nice?
I have no problem with that. I was just thinking that. I was just thinking with Liz and Linda going to be leaving us, there's gonna be, they hold a lot of, you know, different responsibilities. And how do we um try to spread that out amongst us is gonna be. Should we have a plan? That's that was the reason I didn't jump on it. Um.
Got you.
I participated in the bookmark uh contest in the past and worked with Cindy. It was great. I have no problem taking that, but I'm just thinking. Those two important key members of our uh board, they have so many different. Jobs in this and all all of a sudden, both of them are leaving us. There's a lot on the table that we need to absorb.
So Genevieve, we haven't told you yet, but um we'll be having a cup of coffee and giving you the notebook.
And they're not. They're not.
Maybe if it's any consolation, I I've got Liz on my speed dial. So, you know, I say.
I mean, Linda got the crane's art and uh Liz got the budget part. There's a lot of things they're doing and those are all. Uh, need to be absorbed by all of us. And that's why I didn't jump on it, say, okay, I could take it. I I was wondering, should we kind of uh uh wait for the new members or should we just go ahead, fill those. Positions?
I I I would advocate moving forward only because we see what happens when we wait. All of a sudden, time goes by and things just kind of go down the thing. I would I would advocate in this regard to have those two liaisons in place and then can at least. Uh, you know, adjust as new members come aboard, but uh yeah, you see. Uh, Kathy and Linda, you see why we've been so frustrated about the past year trying to get new members added onto our board. We're about to lose two very valuable people and it's 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 uh. You know, we need to be at full strength to be able to provide uh what our mission is, is to help the library grow and prosper. And so that's why we've been sort of anxious about that. Linda?
Yeah.
I I was just going to say that um if, you know, even though I'm not going to be here for long, if I try uh be kind of make a. Um, uh, like you said before, a template of what this position, this liaison position could be like. Uh, it would be easier to pass it on to a new member rather than a new trustee coming onboard. And being overwhelmed with the task of creating a new. Um, a new position. So even though it's not, I won't be there for very long to do it. Um, just to kind of get my feet wet and and um and get some reaction too from the friends to make sure, make sure they even. Wow, want a liaison. Um, but at what I'm and I'm sure they do. I have, you know. Know a couple of the ladies on the board uh pretty well, and I don't think it's going to be a problem, but. Yeah, I I'm I'm worried. I'm really worried about new people coming on. You'll have two new trustees. Uh, you'll hopefully have two new alternates also, and. You don't want to overwhelm them uh to the point of that they don't want to um renew their. Uh, their participation after three years and then you're in the same boat all over again.
Um, right.
So, yeah, I would I would think it would be a good idea for Genevieve to jump in there and um, you know, make make that path. Uh, for the foundation and then be able to turn it over to somebody else.
Yeah.
I'm getting a feeling there's a consensus.
Crane art project. I was thinking that's also important. I was just thinking during the meeting, thinking maybe I should uh start being understudy, you know.
That that is also okay. I I did, I didn't want to say it, but that was part of, that's also part of my my grand plan.
Yeah, I was thinking about contacting you after the meeting of thinking someone's going to have to take that one too. Um.
It's not.
That was the reason I couldn't go, okay.
Yeah, it's it's the Crane Art Gallery is not terribly time consuming, so that, you know, that.
But it seems important to have, you know, because they all, well, foundation does wonderful job to support the library. Um, there. And crane art is also another source of funding our library. So those are all important roles that I think that we need people to. Take on. Um, I don't know. What do you think? Which one is more suitable for my kind of personality?
Well, you also have a financial background.
Well, that's that's.
You have also.
I am so torn.
You've been an understudy on some of the budget and donations materials.
I did.
So you're just gonna have a lot of jobs to do, Genevieve.
Genevieve, this is not an either or thing. It's not an either or thing. It's a and.
No, 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 no.
Do do we need a motion for this or do we in terms of 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 having the liaisons? Do you do? Does this require a motion or is this something we can just by consensus uh agree?
I I don't think it's a it's a we we suggested that you discuss this possibility. So.
Okay.
Yourselves and and I'm hearing that there's there, you would go from one. You know, the 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 art gallery liaison, but we're adding the um friends as well as the foundation.
Yeah. Any uh uh any other thoughts on that?
As liaison responsibilities to our.
Yes.
Holders.
I just, look, I think from from a um, I don't want to say political standpoint, but just as an organizational move. The fact that the board has liaisons to the our true fundraising groups is really important. It gives them a voice at the table and. Hal wouldn't have to come to these meetings as frequently. You're welcome anytime, Hal, but I I just think that's that's a definite outreach and then therefore. Uh, at the board, uh, connecting with those two people then is liaison with the city to do the staff to to let them know what, you know, we had this direct input of what needs to be done. How does it get funded? What what can everybody do?
I think it's a great idea. You have my support. Um. I I also think in turn, just like Hal is at this meeting and going to quarterly budget and donations reports. Perhaps you could structure those agendas to have those reports at the beginning of the meeting and then invite. A a liaison goes both ways. And so perhaps at those meetings to invite like Hal. And then leaders of the friends to participate.
Great idea.
Right, and and the and the foundation is more than happy to. Right. And, and the foundation is more than happy to participate in fact. Whoever, whomever you decide as a liaison, we actually have a meeting coming up in March. I believe it's the 14th. Let me check my, my calendar. So. Yes, the 14th, I believe it's at seven, but whomever you decide, we'll be more than happy to introduce the group to. Your new liaison to the foundation and we could get started right away. I mean. We're, we're up for anything that could move the process much quicker. And get you the funding needed to help benefit the, the, the customers and the patrons of. Of the library to make it a much more inviting environment. So, so we're more than happy to participate, assist in any way.
Great. Thanks, Hal. Uh, any, anything else on that subject before we move to my, my question of if there was any written communication or public writings that we received? Kristen, do we get anything? No. All right then. Thank you, everybody for your time, your participation. And I will adjourn the meeting and we'll see, well, we will see you April 11th.
Right.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.